It's been to come to order, today is Tuesday, July 11th, 2017. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Mayor Pro Tim, do you have any introductions?
Wow, we got almost a full house today. If I had my trothers, I'd introduce every one of them, but since I don't, I would like to talk to Division Chief Devendorf. Thank you for showing up, Chief.
My pleasure.
Okay, invocation today would be by Father Roger at the Sacred Heart Church, and Pledge of Allegiance would be by the Mayor Pro Tim.
God of Justice and Mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and kindness. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy to build a peaceful and just community according to your holy will. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen. I'm gonna ask you all to join me in the pledge, and as I do, let's just reflect on the words we're actually stating, and what commitment you're actually pledging to. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Obern.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair will be late. Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Walcott.
Here.
All present.
Like you, do we have any announcements, City Manager?
Just a minor announcement where I'm concerned, starting Wednesday through Friday of next week, I'll be at the Arizona City Managers Meeting in Tucson. You guys need to get ahold of me. But I'll be here part of the day on Wednesday, and I'll be leaving after that.
And I think we have a ad hoc committee tomorrow on sober living homes?
We do.
Five to seven?
Five to seven.
Okay. And I'll be in Bisbee on Thursday for the second meeting of the State Ad Hoc Committee on PSBRS. Thank you for everybody coming today and taking time out of your day. I think we're gonna be able to move through this one fairly quick today, so we'll get started. We'll start with presentations.
A, offerings of citizen recognition.
Mayor and Council, members of the audience, Councilwoman Orr is going to read a presentation on June 9th at the Prescott Lakes Golf Course. We had a wildland fire that started before we went into fire restrictions. It was started by a construction site that was grinding on steel. Sparks flew out. We had a rapidly moving wildland fire that was active on three flanks, which is difficult for us to work with. And thanks to the work of some of the people that worked for Prescott Lakes, they were able to turn on the sprinklers and work one side of that fire so that we could pay attention to the head of the fire that was moving towards the structure. And we wanted to give them some special recognition today for assisting us with keeping that fire small and protecting structures.
Thank you, Don. I live in that neighborhood, and I walk that often, and it's good to see so many Prescott Lakes folks here. And there's, we were really fortunate that that did not get out of control. The certificate of appreciation is awarded to, and I'll read each of the names, in recognition of your valuable contribution. On Friday, June 9th, 2017, you distinguished yourself by taking prompt and selfless actions towards suppressing a wildfire, which broke out in the vicinity of the Prescott Lakes Golf Course, endangering property in the area. Prior to the arrival of the fire department, you activated area sprinklers, took positive efforts to fight the fire with the tools and equipment available to you. Your actions were of great aid to the professional firefighters. Your efforts reflect great commitment to your employer and to the citizens of Prescott. Could you please come and join us? Brian Wilhelm. You want to just stand here, and then we'll get a picture? Thanks, Brian. Todd Pruitt. Thank you, Todd. Mike Rothstein. Thank you, Mike. Jimmy Freeman.
He can wait.
Okay. Can I give you that one for him? Thank you. Forrest Horton. Thank you, Forrest. And Roderick Goetzen. And thank you all for what you did. Thank you. All right, one last butcher. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always great when citizens will step forward and help our public safety personnel, whether it's police or fire. Sometimes, you know, people are hesitant to do that because they don't know whether they can do it, or they're authorized to do it. But obviously, these people use some self-initiative, and we're very happy that they were willing to do that. Thank you. Move on to our second presentation.
Sheriff Marshes, thank you.
Mash.
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 Sorry.
Whatever you call it. He understands me.
We butchered that one, didn't we?
Well, that's okay. I've been called all kinds of things, I'm sure. You know that. Some of you have done that yourselves, so. Jim. Anyway, I came by today because I really wanna thank the City of Prescott, and I wanna thank the Police Chief Debbie Black personally and publicly for the help that the Sheriff's Office received in the Goodwin Fire. And it was, it was a bad fire. It truly was. What I saw personally, what I witnessed the fire do, come down the mountain as fast as it did, took a turn the next day and came toward Prescott, and I really believed it was gonna come into the city limits the way that thing was moving. And the Sheriff's Office responsibility is primarily in those kind of situations for evacuation, and then the protection of that property with patrols and various things like that, and just try to find places for people to evacuate to. And their animals are critical. Thousands of animals were housed. We, at the last count, about 7,400 people were evacuated from the various communities because of that fire. And for me at the Sheriff's Office, the staffing of something like that is just overwhelming. When you look at 24 hours a day, for as many days as we went, a full week, all hands on deck, nobody gets days off, people who are on vacation were called back if they could make it. And without having to ask, Chief Black sent many, I don't know how many total, but she sent a tremendous amount of help for me with evacuating places around Lynx Lake. We evacuated about 1,500 kids from the summer camps. So it was a tremendous amount of work. And to know that I have a friend and a partner in doing these kind of things was something I felt, you know, it's not much to come here and say thank you, but I thought it was important for me to come do that personally, and it really, truly is appreciated. I know that I can rely on her and the Prescott Police without having to ask on these kind of crises. So, thank you, Chief. It's very much appreciated. Your staff is very professional. They sat out there on Lynx Lake, out around Walker, helped us protect those homes, the communities. It put a lot of people at ease, knowing that we had patrols in those areas. I can't thank the firemen enough, too, Don. You know, it was a great job. It really was, to see everybody come together like that. But I was gonna send a letter, and I still will, but I just wanted to personally come and say thank you all very much for the help from the City of Prescott. It truly was something that meant a lot to me, and I look forward one day to returning the favor as well. So, thank you all very, very much. And Chief, again, thank you and your staff. Very professional, very well done, and very much appreciate it. Me bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff, and we thank all the first responders that helped fight that fire and protected property. And like you say, it's always great to see the agencies come together and work for the betterment of everybody. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
A, approval of Personnel Service Agreement, City Contract Number 2018-008 with Mary Ann Connors, not to exceed $13,000 for an independent review of the city's Public Works Department and Project Delivery Systems. Item B, adoption of Ordinance Number 5038-1578 to approve the lease agreement, City Contract Number 2018-007 with Yavapai County for a 4-H building at Rodeo Grounds. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving a lease agreement between the city and Yavapai County. C, approval of proposed rates and fees at the Prescott Municipal Airport. D, approval of Amendment Number 3 to the city's Custodial Services, City Contract Number 2016-213 to Plan B Facility Services to include the airport campus. Item E, adoption of Resolution Number 4395-1604, approving an intergovernment agreement with the Yavapai County Flood Control District. Contract Number 2018-003 to accept funding in the amount of $600,000. Award, the City Contract Number 2018-002 to ALC Underground LLC for construction of the Copper Vista Lift Station abandonment project in the amount not to exceed $1,056,589. Item G, approval of City Contract Number 2018-006 with Zetron Inc. for public safety dispatch radio software at Prescott Regional Communication Centers in the amount not to exceed $21,330.34 using Arizona contract pricing ADSP 013-036612. Item H, approval of an agreement, City Contract Number 2017-290 with the Storage at the Dells LLC to provide various roadway improvements to the, to and upon the city-owned state Route 89 right-of-way. Item I, approval of the City of Prescott Police Department to apply for various FY2018 grant funding opportunities.
Does any member of the council want to pull an item for further discussion? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 9A through 9I.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Move on to Liquor License Agenda.
9A1, new licenses. Public hearing and consideration for a new liquor license application for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License from Mateo Chavon, applicant for Limoncello Pizzeria Napolitana, location 220 Goodwin Street, number 101, 201, 202. Mayor and Council, this is a request for a new liquor license for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License. The application has been deemed to be in compliance with the city requirements and has been recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid. The applicant has been posted for the proposed location for the required 20 days. No public comments have been received, and the applicant is in attendance today. Is Mateo here?
Can the applicant come on down, if he's here?
I guess he didn't come in.
Okay.
Item B, 9B.
We'll finish this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a new business starting up. Limoncello Pizzeria Napolitana. Is there any public comment?
Okay, do I have a move to close the public hearing?
So, move.
Second.
Yeah, motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Do you have a second motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Recommendation for Liquor License Application Number 12133680 for a new liquor license for Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Limoncello Pizzeria Napolitana, location 220 West Goodwin Street, number 101, 201, 202.
Second.
Yeah, motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item B.
Item 9B, acquisition of control. Public hearing and consideration for acquisition of control for a Series 9 Liquor Store Liquor License for Adriana, Adria, Andrea Dolman-Lukowitz, application for Walgreens Number 2555, location 178 East Sheldon. This is a request for acquisition of control for a Series 9 Liquor License. The application has been deemed to be in compliance with the city requirement and being recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid. The applicant has been posted the proposed location for the required 20 days, and no public comments have been received.
Do I have any comments from the public on this? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing. Second.
Got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I move to approve Liquor License Application Number 09130016 for an acquisition of control for a Series 9 Liquor Store Liquor License for Walgreens Number 2555, location 178 East Sheldon.
Second. Okay, I got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item B2, public hearing and consideration for an acquisition of control for Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License from Andrea Dolman-Lukowitz, application for Walgreens Number 09292, location 1310 Willow Creek Road. Mayor and Council, this application for acquisition of control for a Series 10 Bar and Wine Store Liquor License. The application has been deemed to be compliance with the city requirements and has been recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid. The application has been posted for the proposed location for the required 20 days. No public comments has been received.
Okay. Say to attorney, maybe we can just explain what this procedure is here, so people understand it out there.
Well, I believe it is a new agent is being appointed for the liquor license. In other words, the two Walgreens are gonna just, what it appears to me is the two Walgreens are gonna just maintain their current operations with a new agent who's responsible for those two stores to comply with all of the appropriate liquor laws in the state.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any public comment on this particular application? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Do you have a second motion?
Mayor, I move to approve for Liquor License Application Number 10133209 for an acquisition of control for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Walgreens Number 09292, location 1310 Willow Creek Road.
Second.
Got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Like you, move on to item C.
Item C, there is one special liquor license application on today's liquor license agenda. It is for a Series 15 Special Event Liquor License, a request by the Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona for Saturday, August 12th, 2017, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The application has been deemed to be in compliance with the city requirements and is being recommended for approval. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Do you have any public comment on this particular event? Do you have a motion?
I move to forward Special Event Liquor License Application 9C1 to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Can you move on to regular agenda?
Item 10A, approval Amendment F to City Contract Number 1994-124E as amended for reassignment from Spitfire Films Inc. to Hood Tech Corp. Aero Incorporated.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Yeah, this is actually a land lease transfer. The existing building was constructed in 1994 and is currently owned by the owner of Legend Aviation, Chris Woods, who is selling the hangar on the city-owned land to a new business that's coming into town. And these gentlemen are locals. They have been doing business out of town, and I want to introduce the president of Hood Tech Aero for a quick introduction and a briefing of their operation. His name is Jeremy Young.
Thank you for having us here. Thank, I'm doing well. I was born and raised in Prescott. This was my little brother. We're the young brothers. And we've been here, you like that, Jim? That was just for you.
I love that.
Been out of Prescott for about 10 years, moved to Hood River to build an air museum and to start an aviation business in Hood River. And ever since then, it's been growing rapidly, and it's time to bring it home. We would like to bring it back to Prescott. So I'll just tell you real quick, a few minutes, I'll bring Johnny down here. He's got, he's, well, I'm 10 years older, I'm obviously more attractive and better looking than him.
Why?
So, Tac Aero, we are currently in the Pacific Northwest. We do specialty training for aviation. So we do a lot of government contract training, where we teach guys to turn their airplane off in air and land off on a dirt road and be able to survive once they do that. So, we do a lot of that. We also do a lot of specific tailwheel, where we are teaching guys to fly in biplanes and specialty-type tailwheel aircraft. And it's a more challenging platform, it requires a little more skill set. We also are a parent company to Hood Tech. Hood Tech is a large, is the world's largest supplier of cameras for drones, for UAVs, specifically for the Boeing Scan Eagle. And while I was overseas, deployed, operating these types of systems, we thought there'd be a really, a big opportunity to be able to use them stateside. These cameras can see through smoke, they can see infrared, they can do all types of things. And while I was overseas, we had the tragedy here in Prescott. And so I had some friends that I went to school with, and that happened, and actually is the reason why we started Tac Aero. So, not that we're saying we could have prevented that, but we sure could have helped out. These cameras can see through the smoke and be able to do different types of things. So currently in Hood River, we support the Forest Service, the Oregon Department of Forestry, the Forest Service as well, where we're able to shoot live video down to the guys on the ground. The guys can see it, and they have a different situational awareness that is hard to get any other way. And we're trying to get our feet in with the Forest Service to promote this type of technology. We also do a lot of training payload development. So these cameras come on these aircraft, and we actually develop these cameras so they're more useful and spread that technology rapidly throughout the U.S. Department of Defense and also through other lines within the government. We also do these command vehicles that actually shoots the live video down to the ground, and people can operate the cameras from the, from the ground while the airplanes are flying around in the air. And you can see some of our local Forest Service, our local fire departments have a lot of fun with Tac Aero, because they have all these toys at their fingertips, and we use it as research and development while they get to go do in search and rescues. And obviously, we see a need for, here in this area, where we could, we could be a benefit or a tool that would be available. We do a lot of different types of imagery for different types of things. A lot of the stuff we do in the northwest, we do for hops fields and orchards, where they're able to see the different types of moistures that are inside of a plant, or if they're sick, or if they need certain types of sprays or treatment. And that's what these different types of cameras can do, as well as mapping. There's a lot of companies out there that do that. We create those cameras for those companies to be able to do these types of systems. We are a sole provider of training for a company called Cub Crafters out of Yakima, Washington. So whenever someone buys an airplane, a new airplane, one of these new Cubs, these Cubs run anywhere from 200 up to a half million dollars, these airplanes, and so we do all the factory training for these guys. With that, we also do all the training for the Department of Interior of Alaska. So when those guys get, go up to Alaska, they come down to us, we see them once every two years, and we, we put them through the wringer and make sure they know how to fly an airplane, that they're safe. And what we happened last year is we got eight feet of snow, and then our berms were about 15 feet along the runway, and so we weren't able to operate for a few months. So, Prescott's another good reason why we can come here and get away from that mess. We do survival training as well. Anybody that's been in the military knows what a SEER instructor is. And a SEER instructor is someone that is there just to make life miserable. And what they do is they teach you to survive. And our SEER instructors that we have do that same thing for the government now, and teach guys how to do that, that are working for U.S. Fish and Wildlife for the Department of Interior. Real quick, this is where we're looking at, trying to get this hangar at the Prescott Airport. So just north of that red square is Ruger Road. And so where the new, kind of improved entrance to the airport is, is where that hangar's at, and that's where we're looking at being able to purchase this hangar and set up operations for Tac Aero Southwest. And begin, begin operations as soon as we can. You can see there's a few other things we do in our spare time. What we're asking from the City Council is, the only thing that's holding us up right now is the, is the lease for the building. Currently, the lease has, expires in November of 2019, and we're looking to be able to extend that lease, so we can get the financing squared away. Our capital investor is weary of investing in a, in a $380,000 hangar with a two-year lease remaining on it. Even though there is an option for extension, they're, they're weary about that. So, there's a letter that John sent out, that we're asking the City Council to be able to extend that lease, the 25 years, and be able to help us keep the momentum moving and get us down here. Thank you. Have any questions?
Before we go to any questions from the council, you want to talk about your relationship with Emmett Riddle?
Sure. So my little brother Johnny is a professor from Emmett Riddle. He teaches all that unmanned aerial services. He's trying to teach people not to fly drones over Goodwin Fires and stuff, and that's his goal in life. He's also deployed overseas with the UAS systems, these unmanned aerial systems, and that's my background in that as well. My grandfather in 1927 was one of the founders of Emmett Riddle. And originally, they did mail routes. They transported mail from city to city, and then it turned into a training environment. So, Emmett Riddle goes back to the very beginning for our family, and the Youngs have been in the Prescott area since the very beginning as well, so we're...
And Emmett Riddle can utilize some of your platforms for their own training for students?
Emmett Riddle's looking at utilizing a lot of these, also the UAV stuff for the camera testing. We're meeting with the dean, Brent Bowen, is coming to Hood River on Thursday, and we're looking at being able to provide all the tailwheel training and backcountry training for Emmett Riddle. So, we're working and we're in negotiations with them about that. There's obviously some serious momentum for that. And the nice thing about Prescott is, one of the things that we struggle with in our own company is being able to find quality and qualified professionals to enter our workforce. They just, it's really difficult to find. Emmett Riddle's unique in that we can build our own. They're right here in our backyard, and we can keep them with us, and we can, we can employ those guys. So, that's a selfish reason. I was telling the mayor that yesterday, but one of the selfish reasons for coming here is the workforce that's available here, that we could train from the, from day one, and then be able to utilize them.
So when do you want to start operations, and what portion of your company are you gonna move down here?
As soon as, as soon as we have, as soon as we have the lease agreement done and all of our business license stuff arranged, we'll, we'll move it down here as soon as possible. Johnny lives here already, so we're gonna plan on bringing, initially, we'll bring three aircraft down. We have a fleet of 21 aircraft, and the Hood Tech Company together is just over 300 people. So, we're a big tech company, and we see huge advantages of being able to integrate technology within this airport with our camera systems, and being able to do training year-round and development year-round. So, we'll start off with, with three aircraft and see where it goes from there.
Okay. Got some questions for you here. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I want to thank the young boys for recognizing opportunity in your hometown, coming back where you belong, bringing what you learned back with you to help the community. You know, Emmett Riddle is very important to the City of Prescott, and we strive hard to put investments into our infrastructure, which not only includes roads and water and You guys, we invested in you too. And here you come. And that's what we like to see. Thank you for investing in the city.
Thank you, council.
Councilwoman Zell.
Thank you. You know, you answered most of my questions as far as employees and whatnot. Welcome. Thank you for coming back. I just have a question. This is, we're not voting on a, on a lease today. We're just, we want to get it so it comes to us later.
Now, the mayor, council, today, the, what the staff is asking is to approve the assignment and assumption of the current lease to, to Tac Aero. And then in two weeks, we'll bring back the actual lease with the suggestion to amend. Currently, the lease allows for a 25-year extension, not more than 90 days prior to the, to the expiration of the first 25-year extension. I'm not sure whether that's in there. It seems to be no real good business reason. And so what we're going to ask the council to do is amend the lease to strike that clause and then at the same time allow the tenant, then the new tenant to exercise its option for the second 25 years. So it'll be essentially a 28-year term if the council approves it. But that'll, that has to be in two weeks because we were just made aware of it yesterday and there wasn't enough time to put it on the agenda. So it's a two-step process.
Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Moore.
Yes, I just want to thank you for your vision and for bringing your mission here. And so we appreciate you, appreciate you bringing your business to Prescott.
Thank you, council.
Councilwoman Blair.
Well, as one of the younger brothers, I'd ask the question, with as many employees as you have, what's your overall vision into the future of how many you will locate here?
Well, if we go back a thing here, there's, there's a lot of opportunity there in that certain area. The hangar's just north of that hangar for sale as well. If, there's, there's three trigger points. One of them is how involved Emory Riddle will get with Tac Aero. If Emory Riddle embraces tailwheel training and they make that part of their curriculum or if they do certain courses like a backcountry course or a upset recovery course, one of those types of things that we can do in our aircraft, then that would exponentially grow the company rapidly in this area, meaning more aircraft, more, more instructors. If, if the payload takes off, we've always been trying to get into the Forest Service. The Forest Service is very set sometimes in their ways about certain things. They still want to use the paper maps. They want to have the, the data that they can be able to use. And sometimes those maps are six hours plus old before they get their fire lines. And so that's, my, my father is still in fire. He's out there on the, on the fire line right now at the airport. And if we can get our foot in the door, Prescott's a great spot to do that. And with, with the Prescott, you know, involvement within fire every year, it seems like, whether it's in the area or it's in the North Rim or wherever, we're hoping that by having the technology here, we can maybe sneak our way in and show them how that technology is useful and how they can be able to use it. If that happens, that would trigger a massive influx. The other one is year-round testing of payloads. Right now, we're, we're, we're limited by weather. And if Hood Tech sees the value in being able to test their cameras year-round, then that brings engineers and that brings the tech side of a, of a branch to Prescott and that would, would grow as well. So it could grow exponentially rapidly depending upon the climate of what happens.
I love sneakers.
You love sneakers?
So you just sneak right in and if we can help you any way, let us know.
All right. Thank you.
And I agree with you. I think right now the U.S. Forest Service here is probably more forward-leaning and looking at doing things differently and I think you probably got a good chance here. Councilwoman Wilcox.
Well, Tac Aero is a good example of the kind of industry business we're looking to bring here. Sounds like we didn't have to make much of an effort to get you here because of all your connections, but it's a good start for us too to have you here so we can explain to other tech industries what you're doing and how you're taking advantage of Emory Riddle graduates and knowledge, technical experience. So welcome.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Chiswick.
Thanks, mayor. So it's my understanding that you're going to keep some Emory Riddle kids here in the area?
That's the intent, yeah. Hopefully, we can get them hooked on. A flying tailwheel, I was telling the mayor yesterday, is a lot like a seaplane flying or even helicopter flying. It's a different type of flying. You're not inside of a metal can and you're hot and sweaty and you're looking at instruments. The door's open and it's just a different type of flying. It's that primal, that, that passion of flying. So if we can get, if we can trick, be sneaky again, trick those Emory Riddle students who just spent a lot of money getting their education, if we can trick them into being full-time career tailwheel pilots, then we'll, we'll do every possibility we can to, to do that.
Well, I appreciate you helping to lower the average age of Prescott.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a plague since I've been here, but it seemed to increase. I'm not helping any things now either.
That's a good statement.
Okay, do we have any comments, questions from the public? Okay, well, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve amendment F for reassignment of city contract number 1994-124E.
Did that here a second?
Yes, she did.
I have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item B?
Item B, adoption of ordinance number 50391579 setting the fiscal year 2018 property cities tax levies in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Prescott, subject to taxation, a certain sum upon each $100 for evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness and providing funds for the general municipal expenses for all, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th of June 2018.
Thank you. Mayor and council, my name is Lars Johnson, Tax and Budget Manager. This item is to adopt the property tax for fiscal year 18. This is following the public hearing, which was held in the last council meeting on June 27th. The total levy would be $1,709,975. And this is, the only increase that this would entail is the amount attributable to new construction. So we opted this year not to increase the allowable 2% so it stays stable. This rate decreases as a result of this action. The rate for next year would be 0.2821 per $100 of assessed valuation, which decreases from last year, .3025. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Councilwoman Wilcox.
Lars, do you happen to know if this now puts us at the lowest tax rate of any city in Arizona?
I don't have the data, but I know it's very low, at least for the surrounding area.
I hope people appreciate that because we get a real deal for the tax, property taxes we pay.
Right. So the, the rate for, the amount for $200,000 valued house is only $56.42 for the year.
Could you compare that with Century Yavapai?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that exact number, but it's at least $500, $500 more per year per house. So if you're, if you're in Prescott Valley and you're in the Century Yavapai Fire District, you would pay at least $500 more.
Yeah, I think I just saw on the $280,000 home, it was about $582 a year, yeah. City Attorney, why don't you explain to the folks out here, because I think some people don't realize that, I have a lot of people saying, why don't you increase your, your city property tax so you can, you know, have more funding for whatever you have issues with? But really, we can't do that.
You're right, mayor and council. The state constitution limits our ability to, to raise property taxes over a certain set amount. There was, and Lars mentioned it, there was an option to raise 2%.
2%.
And staff, you know, the budget chose not to go that route, so that's why the rate's actually going down. But even, even at that 2% increase, it's still, that's the limit of any type of increase. So property taxes, the ability to, to levy property taxes is limited by state constitution. It's not, it's not an unlimited number.
The 2% increase that we got to, it raises a whopping $36,000.
Yeah, I just want people to understand that because I have a number of people that, you know, send me emails and letters and saying, why don't you increase your property tax so you can take care of PSPRS and some of the other issues we have. And I think it's important for people to realize that we're, we're very restricted by state statute.
And constitution.
Yeah, state constitution. Councilwoman Chiswick.
Thanks, mayor. You know, I'd like everybody to know that one of the things that the Strategic Plan Committee did was to look at the possibility of raising property tax. And of course, you got the answer from our city attorney. The only way we could raise property tax was to, would be to discontinue our property tax for a year and then come back to the public and say, this is what we would like for property tax, but it would have to go to a vote, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore.
Yeah, I would like to reiterate kind of what everybody's saying up here. As we've been going about educating folks on Proposition 443, one of our charts shows the sales tax, the property tax. Our property tax is almost nothing. It is so flat compared to the other communities at which we are adjacent. And, and even with that, the, the sales tax and the property tax, we are the lowest in the tri-city area. So I just think it's important for people to realize, like Gene says, what a deal they have on the property tax issue.
And I think the other thing that happens too is people confuse the city property tax with the county property tax. And the county property tax covers libraries and some other things where really our city sales taxes doesn't do any of that.
Right, our, you know, if you, once you get your tax bill, you get the school district, the county, the college. If you're in a, you know, a, some other, the library district, you may be in a CFD district or other special improvement district. At the bottom line of what you pay, Prescott's is, you know, $20 or $56, whatever the value is. It's very small compared to say the $1,800 you may pay a year or something. It's $56 or $60 or $100. It's a very small, probably the smallest, if I'm, if it's fair to say, it's the smallest piece of, of everything on your tax bill by far.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, recommend to move to adopt ordinance number 5039-1579.
Second.
Motion and second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, I always like to try and close with a founding father's comment. This one is from Noah Webster and selecting him in for office, let principle be your guide. Regard not the particular sect or denomination of the candidate, but to his character. Thank you. Enjoy your weekend.